Jeff, the number's 303.
Okay, counsel, if you would, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the addendum that I am pulling forward.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the addendum for the agenda marked April 3, 2019. The subject is discussion for possible action regarding the review and renewal and/or modification of the employment agreement with Scott D. Adams, city manager, as provided for in Section 2, subsection D of the employment agreement.
Thank you very much.
Your honor?
Yes.
Your honor, I'm moved to strike, and I want to say a couple of words about that.
Well, before you move to strike, we need to discuss that.
I know, that's what I'm going to say. Obviously, any motion to be discussed. A lot of inflammatory things have been said in the public media over the last few days, perhaps longer, about any discussion relating to adjusting or changing the employment agreement we have. The city of Las Vegas, I do not think, and I'll be waiting for a word from our legal counsel, I don't believe we can adjust or change a contract. Well, you know, we don't have the authority to override a contract. It's an agreement, but it's also a contract. So I'm worried about the fact that the atmosphere, generally speaking now, is circulating around the town, is that he is in disfavor, the manager is in disfavor, and maybe there are good reasons for saying that. There are, perhaps, but some of the things that have been said bring forward the speculation, the specter of litigation, and I don't like this. I think it's important to remember that maybe we want to make a change, but why cost ourselves millions of dollars in the process by the abuse that's been heaped on this person? So I'm saying it is better, I think, for the new council to take this up when there are new members, but if we do something now, we will poison the well as far as future actions. I think I can just about guarantee that, but that's why I am striking, not to duck the issue, but to say this timing is poor, very, very poor, being handled in public like this. So, thank you, your honor.
Well, and I do want to make a comment. We are down in the weeds here with minutia that's handled by the city manager. We started with my husband as mayor with Virginia Valentine, Doug Selby, Betsy Fretwell, and now Scott Adams. He asked for a two, he wanted a three-year contract. We gave him a two-year contract because how can you go ahead and put in a plan for what you wanted to accomplish without having two years in which to do it? We are down in the weeds. We're talking about things that are not our business. I feel that we need to be up at the top of this, what's good for the entire city, and meeting with our city manager on a regular basis. Yes, of course, there are issues, and yes, some of them, perhaps, from this standpoint of council members, certain issues are not being addressed to their particular satisfaction. But keep in mind, each council member serves his or her award. That's 100,000 people. They are part-time employees. They are part-time employees. There is one person that is elected at large, and because of that, I think I have a much better perspective on what's best for the city overall, and I find this entirely embarrassing. I find it absolutely embarrassing, not only for what's been out on social media and what we have going that is under privileged contract right now, which will be coming out in the future. We can't even talk to that, but it might change. Now, coming up in June with our general election, we will have three, one, two, three, one, two, three, new council people. It doesn't mean that they have any knowledge of government, that they have any knowledge of this city. They have no historical background, and to put people in that position to come out and do an assessment of who is the best city manager. If you do not remember history, you serve to repeat it. We are at a high point in this city. We're looked at all around the globe for everything that we're doing, and I think the leadership, and again, I have to say, down in the roots and down in the grass, there are issues, and I certainly would love to see some of these issues fixed, but that's not our job. This is a city manager type of government, and I just give my full support to our city manager. And I don't know, as Councilwoman Fiori would like to hear from our city manager, or you would like to make your...
Yeah, I would like to make a couple of comments first, and Madam Mayor, with the utmost respect to you. So our city manager swore in with me. He was elected the meeting before I was elected, so I've served two years with him. This contract, there was no alerts on it to alert the council that his contract was automatically renewing before his term, which is July 6. So if we didn't bring this contract up today, it would have automatically renewed. That means serving four years with one city manager that I, as a new member, hasn't had the opportunity to vote on, another new member hasn't had the opportunity to vote on, and as of July 3, there'll be five new members that haven't had the opportunity to vote on, meeting and working with him. So as contracts go, if we just renew this without, and I'm not looking to change anything today, what I'm looking to do is modify so we can, so this contract, his contract does not renew until either the second week of July or the first week in August, so the new council members, actually five of us, can vote for the city manager. It's not in the weeds if we just, if we don't look at what happened here, this contract would have just slid by us with no notice, no nothing, and then if something were to occur in the next year, and let's say we had voted a city manager out, it would cost the city his whole contract. So right now, if we just modify Section 2, Area C and D, which basically will postpone this, it's not an automatic until the new council members, and that's going to be, my motion is to modify that. So that's where I'm going with this, and I'm hoping that my council members will support me on this because the majority won't be here, and that's, I'm just asking for fairness, and in fairness, there's going to be five council members that haven't had the opportunity to work with this city manager. I've had the opportunity for two years, and I won't have the opportunity to vote on him for another two years if this goes by. So with all due respect, Mayor, I really feel that we need to modify today, Section D, to allow other members that are new to vote on this city manager that is sitting and running this city.
Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion to strike, but I want to turn to our legal counsel first, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Dorcak, Deputy City Attorney. The City Attorney's Office reviewed Mr. Adams' contract, his employment agreement. We believe there are three available motions today. One would be, as Councilman Coffin already did, a motion to strike. The second one would be to vote to initiate the 90-day written notice that the contract will terminate on its date of July 6 of this year, which would set up the need to negotiate a new contract with whomever the city council wants, whether that's Mr. Adams or whatever they choose. The third thing brought up by Councilwoman Fiori would be a modification. The city council can vote to do that. However, Mr. Adams is a party to the contract, so he will need to agree to any modification that the council votes for today. Obviously, we don't know what he will want to do, so that's going to be an issue with the modification.
Thank you very much. So let's go ahead with the motion to strike first.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I have a question. I just trying to want to get some clarity. And first, let me state that the questions that I'm asking have zero reflection on our current city manager in any way, shape, or form in terms of his competence and not competence, if he's done well or not, zero input on that. I'm trying to get some clarity in terms of, maybe some historical clarity as well. And does, historically, does the position of city manager go through some type of annual review, or a twice, or, you know, every other year review, and who is that review done by? Where's that coming from? Is that done by the mayor?
Done, mayor and council.
Right, so that's presented to the council, so there's an annual review. But for the contract, his contract has an automatic renewal clause in it, which, I have to be honest with you, I've never seen that before, right? I've never seen someone, especially in a position of that, that would have an automatic renewal if there's not a notice given. Now, we've, my history of hiring chancellors and presidents of universities of all of our institutions, there would be a review every other year or so, or when the contract is up, there is a, you know, outside company that comes in and performs a review. That review is then presented to the council. Council makes the determination of if that person is doing well or not, and if they want to review, I mean, renew that contract. And so this is unfamiliar territory for me because I've never seen any, I've never seen, I don't think I've seen any employment contract in any way, shape, or form that has an automatic renewal to it. So I find, I have to be honest with you, I find that part somewhat disturbing because I don't know how you can automatically renew a contract for someone and, without going through some type of review process. And if the review process is good, then that should dictate bringing to the board, and then the board decides if they want to renew the contract, okay?
There is that process in place every year for our auditor, our lead attorney, and our city manager. There is that process, and as we go with the suggestion to have brand-new people make this determination with no historical input is...
Yeah, I can, I can understand that point, but also, I think, and for clarity as well, if we do not proceed with the process of giving our city manager notice, then we cannot weigh in, per se, on any additional contract or any, any concerns or non-concerns. It seems as though that this 90-day renewal period is where I'm getting stuck, and I, and also for clarity, does the city manager's position report to the city council?
Yes.
Okay. So, which means that the council should, it just seems like things aren't going in lock and step. It seems like a review should go lock and step with any renewal of the contract. No, I understand that completely, just as though you make comparisons to the legislature many times with your historical, I can only say that.
And keep in mind...
And so I'm trying to understand...
Yes, the city council did vote, there was a request for a three-year contract, which the city manager agreed to a two-year contract. How can anybody in a leadership position possibly put anything in place or plan with at least not having two years in the process?
I agree. I think, I think in this particular position...
And that's two years.
Yes.
I mean, we're going into the second year.
Right. I would say, I would say three years would be at a minimum of something that you would want a person in this position to be engaged in, because you do need time to execute and implement. So I'm somewhat stuck. I understand the fact that we have new people coming in, they do not have a historical presence, and to properly evaluate our current city manager, and they would be sort of flying blind. I do, I would, I guess historically, we have not done an outside company to come in and do a evaluation of our city manager, which makes a recommendation to, which takes input from all of us, and then makes recommendations that we would, and then that report would be submitted to the board. So I'm just kind of torn.
Well, and I might add, Councilman Creer, we did go through that process when Betsy Fretwell resigned, and we had a full vetting of different applicants to be city manager, very thorough with consultants, and I must compliment our city manager on amassing an incredible team that has delivered the product. Now, you come along and you go ahead and take that process out, what happens to all those things that right now are in the pipeline, and what does that do to everybody and his employee?
Yeah.
He's the city manager.
Yeah.
And to me, again, I just, I don't know whether, yes, Councilman.
Just real quick, just finalize. My main concern, no...
We are off-topic.
Not necessarily. I'm, I am, I am right on topic. My main, my main concern...
If this motion fails, then you would be...
No, but I think we need to have the discussion before we can...
Well, if we have, fails a motion, you discuss.
Before I, well, before I can vote to strike it or not, I need to have some clarity, and I don't know what everybody else says. My concern, I don't like the automatic renewal of any employment contract that, and that's my issue that I have.
Well, can I speak to the motion?
Yeah, let's hear from Councilman Anthony, please.
Okay, so I'm just gonna have, I'm gonna have to ask you guys a question here. So Councilman Fiori has brought up this 90-day period that occurs in the next couple of days. So just, can you give me, what is the purpose or the intent, because I don't have the contract in front of me? What is the reason for that 90-day period? Why was that put in there? What, what is supposed to happen if we want to do something in that 90-day period? Who wants to explain that?
Well, let's, let's go to our attorney, because that's the legal interpretation.
So I can give you the, the legal interpretation. As for historically why it's in there, maybe Mr. Tarwater or Mr. Davis can speak to it, but what the 90-day written notice section says is that the council needs to give Mr. Adams 90 days' notice, written notice, that it doesn't intend to give him the automatic renewal. That's simply what the 90-day notice does, is it says the automatic renewal is not going to happen. That doesn't mean that he's terminated. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're going some other route. It just means the contract will end when it's supposed to end, and there's no automatic renewal, and then the council after, you know, once the contract is up, can go from there, either working with him on a new deal or going whatever other route they want to take.
So, so, okay, so the, the purpose today, if it was going to happen, would be to vote to give our city manager 90-day notice that we are planning on terminating his contract. That's the purpose of it. So if we, if we don't, if we don't do that today, then what would happen in two months, let's say, before his contract is up? Is there anything we could do at that point except have a performance evaluation agenda item to discuss his performance, but we really can't end the contract at that point? That's what I'm trying to get my hands around.
So Mr. Adams' contract ends on July 6, 2019. If you give him written notice, that is written notice that we're not picking up the two-year option, essentially. If you don't give him written notice today by voting with, you know, four votes, then the automatic renewal will happen on April 7 of this, you know, a few days from now.
So, but we have to do that today?
Right. This would be the last chance. We've agendized it appropriately, and this would be the only chance to basically give him the written note, the 90-day written notice.
So the only thing I can vote on today...
Is to strike?
Is, as far as his contract is concerned, is I, I could technically vote if there's a motion to give Scott Adams notification, we're not going to renew his contract, we're going to do another search for city manager. That's what would happen today? That would have to be the motion, because if the motion is to, to do, just to wait two months in order to do a performance evaluation, well, it doesn't matter what the performance evaluation is, his contract automatically renews if we do nothing today. Is that right?
Right. I would say voting to do the 90-day, well, this is, voting for the 90-day written notice today just says, not that we're, that he's being terminated, it's just that the contract will end on the date it's supposed to end. And between now and July 6, we will agendize accordingly for, if you want a review of Mr. Adams, if you want to have a new deal, you know, written up and brought before you, all of those options become available. That's what we would do in the meantime.
Okay, well, I, okay, so what I don't want to do is, I do not want to vote to give Scott Adams notice that his contract will not renew. I mean, I don't have any reason to do that. So I'm trying to understand what the, so if, okay, so I guess, I guess what would be the alternative motion to help me vote on whether or not to strike this item?
If in fact, if I may, Mr. Attorney?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right. If in fact this item is stricken, it does not pass, and everything continues as is, he will get a second year. And I look at all this team here, who is counting on his leadership going forward. He's amassed a wonderful team. So there is a motion on the floor to strike.
Well, I'm not, I guess I'm, well, I'm not going to support the strike unless I know what the alternative motion could be.
Okay, I think, Mr. Attorney, clarified that, you wanted to do it again.
That would have to be a motion up here. I'd have to hear what the, the motion would be from Councilwoman Fiori on...
So, well, we first have to vote on the motion to strike, to clear the plate.
Can I just get an understanding here also? This seems sort of backwards to me. Why are we having, why did we have a contract where someone was going to be extended or not extended without having the evaluation at the same time? That's what I can't understand. I think some of the concern of people here is that they haven't had a chance to discuss some of the concerns they have. So if we do strike it, if we don't have it, let's give the people who are concerned at least a chance to get out whatever their concerns are. That's what I'm trying to say. Right now, we have a situation where we're, if we, if we go through with this, then this man is, you know, he said he's going to be gone. Our vote will be taken then, I'm assuming, and we don't know what will happen. But what I, what I feel is that we should have combined, and this is for future use, we should combine your evaluation at the time you're going to decide if he stays or not, and that's my question.
And that, we do, as I recall, every April, May, but the caveat here is that because of the wording here, this 90-day caveat, you cannot move forward with an evaluation and have it in place because you've missed the 90-day period.
Well, and I want to say that I think Councilwoman Fiori did a very sharp job of picking up that six thing, that we had to do it by the six. I didn't know that, and I don't know any other councilman here who knew that. So we weren't watching that closely enough, and if it's not Scott, it could be Dracula, who's our next one, and we may not, you know, we might want to go, but we've got to watch these things better, and I think in watching it better, we've got to make sure that we have an evaluation and we have a come-to, what is it, a come-to-God meeting?
Come-to-Jesus.
Oh, come-to-Jesus meeting, okay. We should, we should have this at the same time, and we have not had, given an opportunity to those who have concerns to be able to discuss those concerns with our city manager.
And you will have that in May regardless, because whether or not you bonus the city manager or not, this would put in place the non-renewal clause automatically. That's what you're putting out there. There is an automatic non-renewal. It is, and other than that, you will, for Rad Snelding and Brad Jerbic and our city manager, have the opportunity to talk about issues that everybody might have. That is the purpose of our gathering, to talk about those, those items. And then at that point, the city manager is the only person that does it in public. His response would be in public, in the public venue.
But we would be able to, before, not in public, discuss our recommendations to the manager, right, or not right?
Well, you would in May anyway, you just might not give him a bonus.
But the difference is, I'm not even thinking bonuses yet, the difference is that if we don't do it now, are we then liable for a lot of money on an extended contract? Isn't that a concern that was voiced?
Yes, yes.
See, that was it. I think that's the concern of the people who feel we should do this now.
Right, to try to put a fine point on it and help everybody out with some of the questions, if written notice isn't given today, Scott Adams' contract is renewed this weekend for two more years. He can be fired at any time, terminated per the terms of his contract during the contract. However, as Mayor Protem was pointing out, there are clauses within the contract, there would be a, you know, payout and that type of thing, because he's under contract at that point. So you either give him notice today that you want to structure a new deal in July, or you don't give notice today and he's locked in for two more years, but he still comes up for review, he still is an at-will employee of the council, and all of those things remain in place.
Okay, so let's go ahead, and we have a motion to strike. Let's vote and see where it goes, please. City clerk? Motion to strike is there.
Can I ask one more question of clarity?
You can ask as many questions, you're newly re-elected.
Thank you. So, you know, I know that, I have, I, I don't have an issue, per se, with a contract renewal, I think, I just, I'm just stuck with this 90-day automatic renewal. How do we move forward, have a discussion about contracts moving forward, about taking that clause, or at least having the discussion for that clause as a council, and if that is something we want in our contracts? Because I, if we do strike it, it's automatically renewed, and I'm veering against an automatic renewal. So, city attorney, if you can help me, and, and if we do not, if we do move forward on that a notice, it does not mean that we're looking to terminate our city, our city manager, but then would that trigger a review that is then tied into the renewal of a contract?
Yeah, Councilman, on your latter question, yeah, we could do whatever you want. We could have a review agendized, and then we could have a new deal for him, ready to go as the next item, you know, any, any type of process you want to put in place, we can do that. On the former, I mean, I've heard you, I'm sure Director Tarwater and Assistant City Attorney Davis have, in terms of the 90-day period, so that'll be something that we'll negotiate with contracts as they come up, and if somebody wants it, it might go in there, but the council obviously can decide, well, we don't want it, and that's just going to be part of the negotiation.
Okay, I just think that ties better with have a review, bring the contract, obviously prior to it expiring, bring the contract, review, bring the contract, and that contract might be increased salary, decreased salary, bonus, or whatever. It just seems that makes better sense than to just have an employment contract automatically renewed, in my two cents.
Are you in favor of striking, or are you opposed to the motion, or in favor of the motion?
I am, well, I'm going to vote not...
There's a motion, please vote.
So there's a motion to strike right now?
Mine doesn't seem to record.
Motion, so?
None of these little green bubbles are recording.
They've been taking a long time all day. We're not going to, Mayor, if you're taking a vote, I just...
Wait.
We're not going to solve this problem until we have an understanding, really, of what's the difference between a manager, city manager form of government and, you know, a council form of government? Because how far do you, does the council weigh in on what the city manager does? And there's this not understanding. And all those people there, they come with a mindset and a training of city manager government. Those of us up here may come from a background of another kind of government, the council or a legislative, and you're not going to solve this problem until you solve that situation, I think. situation, I think.
Okay, did you post?
So now, the motion failed. Can I make a motion? Since that motion failed, may I make a motion, please, to modify Section D so we can do a review?
I'm going to modify the contract.
Yeah, so, how do we?
I'm not an attorney, but I don't think we can modify the contract. The only thing we can do is to...
No, he signed the contract. It is a valid contract.
Yeah, is to give notice to say, oh, 90-day notice that we want to have a review and then a renewal of, potential renewal of a contract with, prior to...
Would you like that motion?
Your Honor, we're on seriously thin legal ground here. We are essentially holding a personnel session without notice. We are essentially not...
I have to disagree, councilman. This is notice, this is public notice, this is why we're doing this, because we can't discuss it in the back room.
But you had two years to look at his contract.
We could only discuss, and this is...
And suddenly you decided the problem in the contract didn't suit you.
No, 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 we did not get noticed, we did not get noticed that his contract was being renewed.
You could have looked. What are you doing?
Listen, I did look, that's why we're here.
You could have looked a month ago, two months ago.
I think you're missing the point, Councilman Coffin.
If you've been unhappy with him, you should have taken that up sooner.
Listen, we are taking it up.
It's just your bias.
Do you want to make the motion?
It's your personal dislike of him.
Okay, so here, it's not that. I think it's just fair that we renew his contract, and we, and we literally have an area to where we can see, so, that's the motion. So I would like to make a motion that we are able to look at the contract and, and see where we go in the future.
So that would be, you want to give them, you want to make a motion to give the 90-day written notice?
Yes, please.
Now, does that tie into a, when was our city manager's last review?
Wait a minute, wait, stop. She voted wrong.
I know, I did vote wrong, but the mayor's gone now, and we have to have the mayor here. She came for that vote, so just go on to your motion, just go on to your motion.
If you vote wrong, they could just fix it, and it's done.
I don't know if they could just fix it. I don't know if they could just fix it.
Yeah, they can fix it, you can always open it back up.
Michelle, I'd rather not fix it here and fix it with your motion, the second motion.
Okay, so we'll fix it with my motion.
It was my fault, I apologize.
Okay, so can you say what you want, like the way you did it?
Well, no, so my question is that if there is a motion, I think that, you know, my goal, my, I can only speak for myself, is that I would love, when was the last review of our city manager? I remember when I first got, I think we gave a bonus, was it a year ago?
Correct, July of last year.
So July of last year, we had a review, we gave a bonus, and so it seems like prior to his, his, and we, look, we can do this next month, I don't know, any, any evaluation takes place, whatever that process is, and then a contract, our rec, potentially contract, recommendation of a contract renewal should happen about the same time.
Yeah, we can certainly agendize as you're directing. We can have a review, and we'll work with HR, obviously, but it sounds like you're talking about a review, and then we'll go from there, what other, other steps you would like us to do.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we have to, I would, I think it should be done prior to June, it actually should have been, you know, we should probably should have a meeting now to talk about the renewal, so that our city manager knows that his contract is not going to expire prior to moving forward. But I, and once again, this is no reflection of our current city manager and what his work has done. I personally enjoy working with our city manager, and, but I think a review should go along with any renewal of a contract. And I think with the contract, any renewal of a contract should, you know, we're doing these two-year contracts, potentially look at it being three years or even a four or five-year, and so I think we should probably get this done in May, so that the contract doesn't expire in June.
In July.
Or July.
Just for clarification, excuse me, Mayor Protem, by giving 90-day written notice, his contract terminates on July 6th.
Unless, though, a new contract, if you knew prior to July 6th.
Correct. The current contract terminates, and as you said, we, if a new one is drawn up, a new one's drawn up, and he would go under that contract, correct?
So let's just start working on a new contract.
But he's saying, he is saying that we would do it in May, right? Is that what you were saying?
Well, I made a suggestion to do it, and I think we could do it as early as May, because the fact that if, if, if that process needs it, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to, you know, wait specifically for, for, I think this board is better prepared to make an evaluation of ours, of our city manager versus new people coming in, because they won't have any context, but I do believe that some evaluations happen, and then a recommendation of a contract renewal should coincide with that. And then it'll probably get us on the, on the schedule moving forward, that once the contract renewal is approaching, then we know that the evaluation would come in front of the council, and then with that evaluation, potentially could be another after-three-years agreement in place.
Yeah, I understand, and I think everyone else does on direction, or HR and everything? Okay.
Well, then, is, is Michelle making a motion, or are you making a motion?
I'm not, well, no, and, and one of the things, too, is that you mentioned a big point, like HR, we haven't heard from our HR, we've heard from attorneys, but what is it that HR, does, does, does human resources, as our human resource organization for the city, have a, have a thought on this? HR's been kind of quiet, I guess, I would love to hear from our city manager for the other.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want everybody to understand that any votes taken, I mean, I'm not sure of every single person here, but I know for myself, I am not voting to, on our city manager staying or not staying. I, I feel we have to discuss problems we have, and we've had these problems before. We had some with Betsy, we've had some with Steve Fiori, we, we, these are problems we have, because we are the only government entity in Southern Nevada that has this form of government, and it's not easy. It's not easy to understand. I don't know, for example, I've talked with Scott about some of my concerns, how much authority do I have to pressure Scott on that? You know, I don't know, because it's a city manager form of government. In certain years, I didn't say anything to Betsy or to Scott, because I felt I shouldn't say anything, and then I thought, well, maybe I should. This is difficult. We've got to get a better understanding, not just for us, but for everybody. I, I believe that's, that's necessary. Okay, are we having a motion?
So should, yeah, so should we do the motion first, or hear from Scott? Let's hear from Scott.
Mayor Protem, you can make the call, obviously.
Do you want to be recognized, Scott?
Do you want us to make a motion first?
I'm not really sure what to say, and I, I'm going to be very measured in what I say, because I respect...
You're going to be very well, Scott?
Measured, measured, I respect all of you greatly. You know, I've been humbled to serve as your city manager. The day that the city council, and I don't look at city councils as, you know, who comes on and who leaves, you are collectively a body, we entered into a contract, and I, you know, I, I think that that is a contract with the city and with the council, regardless of who's on the council. I have worked with all of you extensively on matters in your ward and matters citywide. You know, we've worked hard, councilwoman, in the medical district.
Very hard.
And I intend to carry that legacy on. You know, we've built a new library. We're working on Huntridge Park, we're working on homelessness. I've, I made a commitment to Neighborhood Development 2.0, to get back into that, so we could start to refocus on neighborhoods in your wards, something I think we lost sight of previously. We've solved Royal Links after a decade. Tough project, done. We have Ward 5 on fire right now. And I, our team is, is going full, full blast on that project. And I've, Councilwoman Fiori, I truly believe the northwest of this community is the future of our city, and I'm truly committed to getting a business park online in that area. And citywide, we've, you know, we've completed a new muni-court project, at least the agreements, and we're ready to get, to go under construction on something that, again, we've worked on for a decade, and it happened under my administration. So I think, in summary, I think I have helped you, as your new city manager, in a very short period of time, build a city. And that's my skill set. I've been doing it for 42 years now, in cities all over America. And I want to continue to do it for you more. Have there been issues? Absolutely. I am not an insensitive person. I think my team can tell you that when we come out of briefings, or I come out of one-on-one meetings with you, I bring your issues back, and we move forward and carry them out, and then when there are interpersonal issues, I work my hardest to resolve those issues. That's how I roll. That is innate to me as a human being. We have a lot of momentum in this city. We're in an unprecedented building boom downtown. Now, I'll tell you a story. I started here 15 years ago as your development agency director, starting that process, and have continued it ever since, and we've laid the foundation, as a city, for incredible investment. We have the, the first ground-up casino coming downtown in over 30 years. An investor doesn't invest in a project like that without the confidence knowing the area he's investing is can support that kind of investment. And I believe I've been the person holding the baton to get us to that point, to lay that investment potential. I don't believe, if I were on your side of the diocese here, this is the time to change horses on a city manager. This is not, but, let, here's, here's the way I take this. I have a contract, I'm comfortable with it. There is a provision in it that if my behavior is so egregious as a body, you can get rid of me. And in the city management business, let me just say, this, I had talked to Brad, I know when I was negotiating the contract, coming in right after my selection, I asked him, because I had looked at the ICMA contract, the International City Managers Association has a standard contract that they hang out there for, to, to advise communities on entering into, and I asked Brad, I said, "Did you use the ICMA contract?" He said, "Yes." It has an evergreen provision in it deliberately, because with staggered terms on councils, the political vagaries of councils, a manager could never pull off a tenure of enough time serving as your city manager to get the job done. A manager would always be subject to the individual whims of council members, and their tenure would be very limited, and you would never get anything done. And that, that is why the contract is written the way it is. I wasn't being deceitful and not notifying you about it, because you have a way to get rid of me. If I, if my behavior, if I don't listen to you on a continuous basis, you can terminate me.
Mr. Adams, may I ask you a question?
Let me finish.
Okay, you got it.
Let me finish.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I really?
Michelle, please let him finish, because I'm going to tell you something. This is, this is so sad, that we have accomplished so much in this city with all of us working together, and we should not be playing in public something like that, when it would have been better just to meet and say, "We can talk to you about problems." And you would have to be very straight with us, and we will tell you when we don't think you're straight with us, or whatever. That's where we should have begun, I think, I have to say that.
And I, please, I'm not...
And just let him finish, Michelle, and then...
Yeah, do I get to, do I get to finish? I, can I finish my statement?
Yes, I'm telling you to finish. I'm the mayor today.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I, I am not intending any disrespect by that, I just kind of wanted to get my statement out, because I, I'm sitting here listening to the discussion of a unilateral negotiation of my contract. I'm taking, let me, let me, let me be very clear.
Keep talking now, let him talk.
If you vote today to terminate the contract, you're getting rid of me. No, I, no, it's a two-way contract. You don't get to decide with me what I want to do.
It's not reflecting any of his side talk, so...
You know, it's...
It's got to go through the mayor.
Yeah, it is, you, if you vote to not renew today, I...
Is it going to?
This is, this is, it doesn't feel good. I feel like we've been in a very good relationship contractually, personally, and professionally. And to take a moment, I, just as an aside, I've been negotiating contracts my whole life, with some of the best people in the United States. And I know how contract negotiations work, but to find that one point of leverage, which is what's happening here, and use it to renegotiate a deal, when there's nothing about our relationship that's lacking, you've never told me going into today that there's significant issues with my performance. In fact, I look at the, just the opposite, just last July, you gave me a fantastic performance review and a big bonus. So to your point, Councilman Creer, I have an annual review. I've been given an annual review, and you gave me a great review. Now what you're saying is, well, we want to tie the contract term to your review, I have a contract, I'm comfortable with it, if you want to terminate it, I take it somewhat hostilely, and I don't mean any disrespect in saying that, please don't take that negatively, but it's hard for me to take it positively.
You know, Scott, and I can understand how you feel.
Yeah.
I truly can. I don't know, I mean, anybody up here, from what they've said, that they want to fire you or do anything like that, that's why this is so ridiculous. The paper will probably have some big headline or something like that, and that's not the case. And you have done all those things. I know you've done the, the medical district, you were right there at the very beginning, and you've helped me out tremendously in that, and I know about the library, and, and I know about the other things. So don't worry, Scott. If I were you, I'd be the same way you're feeling now, but don't worry, let's finish this up.
May I be recognized?
Wait, we have two people who have theirs on before yours, and then both, and then we're going to finish, okay? We're going to finish, I think, Michelle, Cedric, and then you. Okay, and then we'll have a motion, and let's get this done, and let's do it the right way.
Okay, so, so the motion basically is to, before contracts renew, we need to have a, an evaluation of the contract. So my motion basically would be, with this 90 days, we need to renegotiate this contract going forth to where we actually have an evaluation before a contract automatically renews. This is not saying we're terminating our city manager, this is just saying the, the way this was laid out was incorrect, if we didn't catch it, it just sort of went on. So my motion basically is to terminate the contract, so we can redo the contract with the clause of renewing with an evaluation.
Michelle, would you go for discussing the problem and then making a motion to whatever is done?
So we...
So you would have an idea of what other, other council people felt?
So I think, I think that's, so there's, there's many...
They renegotiate, that's, that's a step in a direction, I don't know.
Well, not renegotiate, so here's the thing, just, if, if we look at the whole contract, I'm just looking at Section 2, Area D, that's it. I'm not worried about any other part of that contract besides Section 2, Area D, that's it. It's the 90-day thing that automatically renews. I just want to be able to, be able to have the evaluation. So that's the motion. Can the, can the attorney be clear on that motion? Just so everyone knows, it's not a termination, it's not changing anything besides the clause that it automatically... Would you stop it, Mr. Coffin? Just stop it.
I'd like to stop you.
Thank you, Madam Ro...
Hope you calm us down. Okay, go ahead.
First, I, I can understand our city manager and your vehement concern... First, I, I can understand our city manager and your vehement concern, and I would have the same concern. I, and you, I'm glad you spoke, because I have, I had, add some clarity to it.
Yeah.
I don't view it as, I guess, if we do do the, if we don't do the 90-day notice, there's automatic renewal. And then I can see how Scott now says, if we don't do it, then there is not a renewal that is terminated. But I, for some reason, I can't get in my mind to understand how you feel as though it is a termination, because at least I can, I'm not looking to terminate the agreement. Quite the opposite, actually. Quite the opposite. I, I, I respect and appreciate, in my short tenure here, all the hard work that our city manager has done, the leadership he's done on the projects that, that are important to Ward Five. Without his leadership, then we could not accomplish any of the things that we've accomplished in a very short period of time. I, I just vehemently believe that in order for any contract to be renewed, there should be some type of review process that happens-
Yeah.
-in connection with the renewal. Now, in this particular situation, because I do have the trust of the city manager, maybe we do do the automatic renewal. And then, if it's, it would be automatically renewed for two years? That's what it would be?
Correct. If you, if you do not exercise the 90-day written notice today, the automatic renewal will happen over the weekend.
Okay. Well, you know, I would be, I would, I would entertain to not give the notice, have it be renewed for 90 days, but then moving forward, how do we, I just, I, I don't like the automatic renewal. And so after two years, I think an evaluation should go with any, any renewal of a contract. And then, my question to HR, or to, even to the city manager, how do we do it for our chiefs and those who have contracts? Is this the same process? Are, are, are there not contracts in place? Or, can someone answer that for me?
Can we make the, or vote on the motion?
Well, if we-
We now have an eminent lawyer approaching the microphone.
That doesn't know how to turn it on. Maybe he could, with-
All right, and we're going to be quiet up here, because we're going to courteously listen to him. I love you, Mr. Coffin, but I-
I don't think we can do this in the member, middle of a motion. I don't think we can entertain testimony. It's not a public hearing.
So here's-
Can I answer my question first, please? If you don't mind?
It's so much out of order here.
Can we please, you know what? We've probably been out of order a lot of times, and let's just, uh-
Don't be expensive. This is millions.
He's going to beat me up before this meeting's over. We all know that. Okay, would you please address the question?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Morgan Davis, Assistant City Attorney, at your leisure to answer your question, Councilman Creer. City Manager Adams, I believe, is the only official executive that has a written contract. The three that work directly for you, Brad at one point had a written contract, doesn't have one now, I believe. I don't believe the auditor has one. Nobody else works directly for you, so they're, in your appointed ranks, at-will employees. No contracts. Does that answer your question?
So you're telling us that Scott's the only one who has a contract of the three employees that work for us?
Yeah. Where's the city attorney?
Okay.
We need the city attorney.
Thank you. Let's have the motion on the floor.
It's still my turn to, on the motion, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Well, wait a minute, you're out of order, aren't you?
I'm asking for your order.
I'm joking with you. Go ahead.
You are out of order.
Just go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Protem. What is the motion?
So, can we have the attorney, wait a second. No, it wasn't. Mr. Coffin, I would like the attorney to repeat the motion.
Okay.
So Councilwoman Fiore's motion is for the council to exercise the written notice under Section 2D of Mr. Adams' employment agreement, which would give him 90 days' written notice that his current contract ends on its termination date, July 6, 2019. And unrelated, or related to the motion, but not part of the motion, is some direction for multiple council members to tee up a review and new employment agreement thereafter. So, or in, in the interlude, I guess.
So that's the motion. Can we vote on that?
Do we have a, a time certain of when that contract would be brought back to the council for approval?
Well, it sounded like you were directing staff for sometime in May, which would obviously hit before the July 6 termination date. Is that correct, Councilman? Is that what you'd like?
And is that, well, I'm opening it up, is that sufficient time to do an evaluation and to also drop another agreement?
Hire and outside evaluate.
Oh, I don't, I'm not, I don't know what the evaluation process is, so outside evaluate. I'm not trying to change that.
Mr. Cedric, are you asking to have a chance where we can discuss this before we vote on extending or not extending? We have time, don't we?
No, so what is, what, so Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor, what he's asking is, would this motion add a caveat of timeframe to where we have, let's say, four to eight weeks, May, June, to negotiate with the manager on, I mean, he's looking to even make the contract stronger. So that's what he's asking, is a time certain to where we renegotiate terms or keep it as the same? It's just, it's, you know, we're open. So, the, so the, so basically, what Councilman Creer is adding is a timeframe-
You're sugarcoating your motion.
Con, contact.
I just want to say this, if I could, Cedric-
Please.
-to all of this. And that is, I can't vote on this motion the way it is if, for gosh sakes, we have all kinds of people up here who are saying how great the CMO is, and yet we're going to vote on something that says, "Oh, it may be great, but you know what? You may be let go in a certain amount of time." I still say, we have to tie that in with an evaluation, and I just want to make that certain.
That's the motion. The motion is tie it in with the evaluation.
I agree, should be tied to the evaluation. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Your Honor, and I, and I would- And now, finally, recognized, I hope.
I'm going to have you talk.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cedric, you can't-
Yeah, but then I would, I would also like to see this completed, if possible, in May.
Idea to complete it in May, yes.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to-
If not sooner.
Yeah, because, to tell you the truth, who knows how well the CMO is done, except for the people who are up here, most of whom are praising the CMO. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Coffin.
Thank you for, thank you for the recognition. I've been watching this situation build between the representative for Ward 6 and the city manager in the public-
I caution you.
-in the public media, and in private correspondence, telling him to fire people, asking him to hire people, asking him to find out who it is that's watching Netflix out there among the 2,000 or 3,000 employees. These things are micromanaging, and they are not part of a council member's duty. To then post an item on an agenda which would give an impression that maybe more than one member of the council wants to look at or terminate the city manager, and yet it's only one person who really, at this moment, is pushing this agenda. I think that, given the fact, I have a lot of respect for my colleague here, there was time, there were, you've been on the council now, Councilwoman, for two years, almost, and there was time for you to look at all these contracts. There was time for you to have examined Mr. Adams' contract. You could have brought it to us privately and said, "Whoa, we better act sometime here pretty quick, because he's liable to get re-employed." All of this now has played out in the public media. Words like questioning his integrity, character, honesty. All of these things from one member of the council has put us in turmoil and opened us seriously to legal cost. And I know this, because I've been through this stuff before.
Because you're being sued right now.
To just really think, I've been sued twice now by useless people. But I can tell you this. I brought this up privately. I tried not to say these things in the public sphere, but here we are. What we have is a situation where now three people on the council have voted to keep talking about his viability as city manager. You got to understand what climate is being set here. How the hell can this man function? How can he run a, who in hell is going to pay attention to him if he looks like he's on thin ice? Now the, now the race starts for leadership here. Now the people will be talking. We have got to, we need a new manager, don't we? So surely you'll consider me, or should we start a national search? In the meantime, the subject here gets an attorney, a good attorney. And we are exposed. We're exposed in so many different ways for so much money, and you know, we worry about legal expenses here. We do. And yet, it is impossible to calculate what we have done to damage this man's employability, a 63-year-old man who is entitled to a fair hearing with warning and a seriously discussed option for perhaps finding a way, a way to the solution. But not with this last-minute rash behavior. I frankly think that it's a shame on all of us that we let it get this far. I tried my desperate most here the last few days to keep it down. I thought it was going to be trailed to the end of the meeting, but it was not. Certainly, think of the long-term consequences of this public debate here. This will not go well for us. It will not. It is not harmless. The motion is to terminate. That is the language. And then, down the line, maybe-
Madam Mayor.
Excuse me, Councilman, the motion was not to terminate. I, let me tell you.
Well, the word's already to terminate in 90 days.
All right, you know what? We have talked a long time. I'm sure these people in the audience are tired of hearing the same thing over and over again.
Well, I'm sure the city manager's not tired of it.
I think each of us up here has our own thoughts already within our minds.
Well, we're in trouble here.
Can I, we have the last motion, and let's go, and let's have a vote.
Mayor Protem, Deputy City Attorney Jeff Dorick down here. I can, if the councilwoman doesn't mind, I can articulate the motion again legally, and then we'll go from there. Is that a, okay, Mayor Protem? Yep. Okay, the motion is to exercise the written notice under Section 2D of his employment contract. The only thing that will happen as a result of that motion, if it passes, is his contract terminates on July 6.
That's certain. That's termination.
The, essentially, that is a decision to not pick up the two-year renewal, and that's the motion. Now, in addition to that, we have direction from-
That's not the motion, though.
We have direct, well, we have direction from, we have direction from the rest of the city council between, or in May, and I've heard a suggestion of a date certain May 1st, that a new employment agreement, along with a review, be teed up for that council meeting. And I don't know if that satisfies Councilman Creer, or what you were looking for in evaluation and new deal.
Let's go with the motion that's on the floor. Let's have a vote.
Okay, I, I would like that added into the motion.
Which is?
May 1st is when a new contract is negotiated, and we do a, we actually vote on a new contract and do a performance evaluation that day. So, can you include that in your motion? Councilman Fiore?
Yes.
Okay, so that's in the motion. All right.
Okay.
Am I understanding this right? Probably the only one up here who's not understanding this right. Can I ask just the lawyer one thing?
Yeah.
I don't want to vote for termination. I don't want to put a CMO on thin ice. I don't want to do that. I do think we should have an evaluation. So how do I vote on this thing, then? What we have here? If I vote, am I doing what I don't want to do?
You vote how you want. If you, if you, if you vote in favor, his contract that he's under now ends on its end date, July 6. However, we have included with the motion, direction to staff, that on May 1st, a new deal will come before the city council, along with an evaluation. So, that's where we are in this motion. To, I mean, the semantics of termination, no, he's not being fired. The motion is to say that his contract ends on July 6, and the two-year pickup is not happening.
That's called firing.
Could I weigh in here? Is it?
All right.
I mean, I feel like we're having, you're having a unilateral discussion about a contract that I'm a party to. I, I'm hearing from the city attorney that the motion is to terminate the agreement.
No, it's not.
Well, that, you've added things to the end of it. At the end of the day, the effect of that is, my contract will be terminated, and my last day of employment will be July 6. That is for sure.
No, because we're gonna, yeah, we're going to bring this back to you.
So, so let me, let me-
Michelle, please.
Let me indicate to you, I can't take that any other way than you're firing me. That's the only way I can take that. I don't care what you added to the end of it, because you can offer me a subsequent contract that isn't worth the paper it's printed on, and I'll never sign. So, so I, you've terminated me. If you approve this, I want it to be very clear, you've terminated me. And, and that's how I'm taking it, and that's how I'll act accordingly, subsequent to your action. I, I don't know any other way to take it, and I am, again, being totally respectful to you as a body. I, but I feel like you can't have a contract discussion about my contract without me weighing into it. The time to negotiate, renegotiate my contract should have been one or two months ago. You should have said, "Hey, we got problems with your performance, we want to," or the contract, "We want to renegotiate. Let's renegotiate it, so that when we give the notice-"
But you didn't give us the notice.
"-we can replace it today with the new contract." But today, if you terminate, you're terminating. That's, that's what you're doing. I am, I, I know enough about contract law to know your action will be terminating my contract.
Mayor Protem, just as a, just as a legal aside, the motion is to exercise the 90-day written notice. The 90-day written notice that the council would be voting on with this motion does not terminate Mr. Adams' services. It's merely exercising its option not to renew for the two-year period after July 6, 2019. That's the effect with respect to the contract, for the record.
Make a vote. All right, I'm going to have to move for a vote. On the motion. I, I do not like to do this without the mayor here. I must tell you that. And I don't know any way that we could do this. I thought when she left that, you know, things were settled, but I, I do not like to do this without the mayor, because she felt so strongly, and she is right in that she represents the entire city. But anyway, please vote on the motion.
Do you need to vote?
I need to vote? I thought I could get away without voting. I have to keep this under, yes. Doggone it. I'm, I'm gonna, I just can't see how a body with as much intelligence as we have up here could get into a situation where we're going to say yea or nay on someone's contract, and we haven't even talked to them about the problems, if there are problems. But I'm going to move on this motion.
Move.
All right, now, can another motion be made?
No, that passes.
That passes. That passes.
So, I think we're on, I-
And I'm, we have to change everything, and we all have to take a 10-minute break in order that we are okay up here. Please understand that I believe this-